I would like to call to order the Malibu City Council's special meeting of December 3rd, 2019. Do we have any public comments on closed session items? No. Okay, we will now recess to closed session. I would like to call to order the Malibu City Council's special meeting of December 3rd, 2019. May I have a roll call?
Councilmember Mullen.
Here.
Councilmember Peak.
Here.
Councilmember Wagner.
Here.
Mayor Proton Pearson.
Here.
Mayor Farrar.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. Deputy Mike Trinan, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Right hands over your heart. On three, begin. One, two, three.
Could we please have a closed session report?
Sure. At 4:30, the City Council convened in closed session, all members present on the items listed on the agenda and took no reportable action.
Thank you, Trevor. May I have an approval of the agenda?
Did you want to move item 2A, Mayor?
Oh.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda moving item 2A before 1A.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Could we please have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on November 20th, 2019, with the amended agenda posted on November 26th, 2019.
Thank you. Okay, so we will move item 2A up. May we please have a staff report?
Good evening, Council. The matter before you is approving the master settlement agreement for the City of Malibu versus Southern California Edison litigation. This is the Woolsey Fire lawsuit. You'll see in the staff report that the terms are generally going to be standard, in the sense that this is going to be money in exchange for a waiver. And if you have any specific questions about the settlement, feel free to ask me.
Thank you. I have two speaker slips. Are there any others on item 2A? Okay, the first speaker is Bruce Silverstein, followed by Ryan Embry.
Good evening, Members of Council. I think I'll be brief on this. I know that it's been publicly reported and a number of people have said that this is a phenomenal settlement, that the city is supposedly getting everything that it asked for. I don't know how the city came to decide what to ask for, but that's what's being reported. In any event, what I want to talk about is the fact that one law firm is representing all the public entities, which you're well aware of. And I believe that's a classic conflict of interest, especially since the public entities need to divide among themselves the settlement proceeds. And I'm very troubled by the fact that the settlement agreement contains language which releases each of the public entities by each of the public entities, and I don't know that you're aware of that. The definition of the released parties is defendants, their agents, parents, subsidiaries, dot, 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 and all other persons or entities who may have caused or contributed to the damages alleged in the complaint. That's the definition of released parties. That means you are releasing every other government entity without knowing at this time whether they do or do not bear any responsibility or contributed or caused any of the damage. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Embry?
I want to commend the Council for taking the initiative and being part of the litigation. I do have some reservations about the potential conflict of the attorney firm representing all the other agencies as well as the city in this package deal whereby you do release virtually everybody for the claim. I wanted to really focus my information on the projected expenses because I think we have probably a list of bills of what's been incurred by the city thus far. But there are likely going to be two to three years of a lot of heavy earth-moving equipment and cleanouts of debris channels and storm drains and things that are going to be far beyond the normal costs for the city for several years to come. And I didn't see the projected costs incorporated into the damages presented for reimbursement because they hadn't occurred yet, but they're going to be actual costs that are going to be incurred by the city and the residents. So I'd like to hear that in the report, is what is the proposed or projected financial impact for this fire event in the next two to three years? Because I think they're fairly predictable and foreseeable. Thank you.
Thank you. We have comments from the Council?
Yeah, I'll make a comment. The world of lawsuits and legal actions, this has to be one of the swiftest things that I've seen. You know, the city's been involved in lawsuits against other government agencies, but it's taken a long time. Sorry about that. Yeah, I said, in the realm of legal actions, this thing was very quick. And I think it's a positive outcome for the city in the wake of a pretty substantial disaster. And there's a lot of reasons why it went quickly, I'm sure the motivation by the power company. But I wanted to point out that, and thank the staff and the city manager for getting all of the appropriate documentation together in a timely fashion. And I think it was a fairly short period of time that they had to get all the documentation together to make this possible. And for doing all the diligence that was required to support this for, on behalf of the residents of the City of Malibu. So just want to point that out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sure.
Thank you, Karen. I'd like to ask our city attorney, in the definitions that was explained by Counselor Silverstein, it said entities. And what I would like to know is if you can give us an opinion on entities including vendors, those sub-vendors to SCE who may have lawsuits pending against them in the mass tort. And does the mass tort have any leniency in looking at the settlement from the city's point of view? I know it's two questions, just a quick throw at me and I'll be happy. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to pass this to John, if you want to. John's been working with these guys in terms of the release. Do you want to?
So I guess the first question is, this release is going to be essentially Southern California Edison and all of its affiliates and subsidiaries and corporate boards and corporate officers and anyone ever affiliated with Southern California Edison. That's what they're getting in exchange for paying out this $210 million. And then I guess I didn't understand, what was the second question?
The bearing this may have on the mass tort, because certainly 215 or 220 million is a small amount compared to the mass tort that will be coming forward. Are we implicated by not including some of the vendors that SCE carries? If in the mass tort, they've found that there's a preconceived idea that they would be free of the mass tort filings? Are you following kind of? Yeah, I'm using, are they going to use this as a stepping stone to reduce their obligations in the mass tort?
Well, in terms of, I guess what they would do, I'm not sure how they would act, but in terms of from the city's perspective, releasing Southern California Edison and all of its affiliates, I don't think is going to prejudice the city in any way going forward, simply for the fact that the settlement that the city is getting is a fair representation of the damages experienced by the city. And I don't think that it would be an issue in the future of saying, oh, we should have included X entity or Y business because, you know, they're liable. Ultimately, the offer that was presented to the public entities and what the city got was enough to justify a settlement. And so I don't think not including certain entities will affect the city in the future, if that was today.
The city did very thorough research about all the damages that could be attributed to SCE and was very thorough in that. So at this point, we're confident that that would encompass the universe of damages we're expected to get from SCE through this litigation. And then, you know, in exchange for the settlement, you know, we're releasing them for, be able to go after them for any more money on top of that.
I appreciate that. The governor signing the bill, rate pay or repay, would certainly wear into this as well, recognizing that the city entities' claims totaling probably 10% of what the mass tort will be, just ballparking it. So I hope they don't use this as kind of a gauge in the mass tort. And I thank you for your opinions. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Skylar?
Do you need to make a motion on this? So I'll make a motion to accept this final agreement memorializing the settlement approved in this concept. Southern California Edison.
Second.
Is that the full staff recommendation, including directing the city attorney to sign the master settlement agreement and direct the city attorney to take whatever further steps necessary to finalize the settlement?
That would be affirmative.
Great.
Rick, was that a second?
That is correct. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. Okay, we're moving to item 1A. And if anybody has not turned in a speaker slip yet who would like to, could you please do that now? And once the item has begun, we will not be taking additional speaker slips. Anyone else? Thank you. All right. Could we please have a staff report?
Good evening, Mayor Farrar, Councilmembers. There are several speakers here tonight, so in the interest of time, I'll keep my remarks brief. Last month, staff presented the financial and legal analysis the Council requested on the impact of a short-term rental ban and the procedures required to adopt such a ban. After consideration of the analysis and public testimony presented, Council directed staff to, one, initiate a zoning text amendment and local coastal program amendment that would regulate the short-term rental, regulate short-term rentals similar to the Santa Monica Home Sharing Ordinance, and include other provisions discussed at the September 26, 2018, meeting, and bypass the races and take the amendments directly to the Planning Commission. And, two, to bring back the updated version of the September 26, 2018, draft ordinance for adoption with the understanding that it would be superseded when the new Home Sharing Local Coastal Program Amendment and Zoning Text Amendment are approved. As requested, staff is back here tonight before you to move these two items forward and present the interim short-term rental ordinance for first reading, which will be superseded by the Home Sharing Ordinance, and the resolution to initiate a local coastal program amendment and zoning text amendment for the proposed Home Sharing Ordinance. The first item before you is the interim short-term rental ordinance. This proposed ordinance was vetted through a series of public meetings and is intended to codify the existing short-term rental uses and provide the city with some enforcement tools to curtail the use, the short-term rental of residential properties, oh, sorry, to curtail the short-term rental of problematic properties. The interim ordinance will establish a three-tiered short-term rental permit system that will distinguish between primary residents, non-primary residents, and multifamily building owners. The ordinance is intended to regulate short-term rentals and can ultimately be used to revoke rental privileges if necessary. The provisions of the ordinance are essentially the same as what was presented to Council September 2018. The interim ordinance is set to be effective June 1st, 2020, and be in place until superseded by the Home Sharing Ordinance. The second item before you tonight is the resolution initiating the local coastal program amendment and the zoning text amendment for the Home Sharing Ordinance that will supersede the interim ordinance, once certified by the Coastal Commission. Given the city's approved work plan priorities and the Planning Commission's long-range agenda, staff estimates that as soon as we can present the amendments, the Planning Commission is March 2020. After the amendments are presented to the Planning Commission, they will be presented to the Council for approval. Once they are approved by Council, the draft local coastal program amendment would be submitted to the Coastal Commission for certification, and at which time the Coastal Commission staff would review and agendize the item. Staff is available to answer any questions on these items and next steps.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I have quite a few public speaker slips. I will call your name in groups of three, and if you could please try to move to the front so we can not waste time in between, that would be appreciated. The first three speakers are John Mazza, Graham Clifford, and Pam Van Ireland.
I thank you again for adopting, or setting forth the Santa Monica Ordinance as our base. What I want to talk to you about tonight is why this has to be a ZTA and why the interim ordinance doesn't have to be a ZTA. Now, I spent all afternoon reading the LIP. I found absolutely nothing that authorizes short-term rentals on any of the categories of the LIP table of uses. So what you're saying is, well, we're going to put in an interim ordinance that regulates something that isn't in the LIP. And I, quite frankly, do not understand why something else that does the same thing has to go to the Coastal Commission. The Coastal Commission has no authority to change our LIP unless we ask them. And if we don't ask them, what we are doing is enforcing our interpretation of the current LIP. The current LIP has no provision that governs these ordinances. So we can govern our uses under the LIP the way we feel like unless we want to make them more strict than the LIP. There's nothing in the LIP that says what's more strict. Right now, it's a total ban. So if we pass an interim ordinance and we don't send it to the LIP, is it valid? And the interim ordinance of proposed has, as the Planning Commission pointed out and other people, huge loopholes in it, and it allows uses that were not contemplated in the LIP. Nobody in the LIP ever mentioned short-term rentals in multifamily, for example. They're not in the table. They're not in the residential table. Our attorney told us that the difference between a weekly rental and a monthly rental are the same. That's not common practice in real estate law, and any real estate law person could tell you that. So what I'm asking is that you fast-track the Santa Monica ordinance, pass it, and enforce it without going to the Coastal Commission. The Coastal Commission could change what you do if you ask them. So don't ask them. Now, also, I'm here to ask that you put a fast-track on this, you authorize a budget item that allows the planning department and the staff to spend extra money getting this done quickly, hire consultants, there's certain people in town that know an awful lot, and move this forward as fast as you possibly can and get it in effect before the end of summer because we have an election coming and it will die at that point. Now, also, we need to, if you pass the interim ordinance, you need an expiration date or it could go on forever. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Graham Clifford, followed by Pamela Van Ireland, followed by Mark Maniscalco.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me here. I endorse everything that John just said, particularly with regard to the ZTA, and I won't say it again because he said it better than I could. So I will move on to my next word, which is enforcement. As a city, we've always had problems with that word. And no matter what you pass, whether, as far as this interim zone ordinance is concerned, if it's, if you don't enforce the laws that you guys put together, there's no point in putting them together, you know? It's, what's the use? So we have to come up with some money, and now thanks to Edison, we have some money, or we will have soon, in our budget. We don't have to concern ourselves as much with that. We can hire some enforcement personnel to actually go out and enforce the laws. I believe even right now, where the, all the STRs are operating illegally anyway. And also, a tiny little country like Catalonia has just made four million euros from fining Airbnb and other STRs. So we could actually make more money fining them than taking in their tax. So if we ban them outright, we can just fine them, huge sums of money. And the last thing I want to mention is quality of life. I mean, quality of life in our community trumps money any day of the week. So please keep that in mind on your deliberations and just, you know, think of what's left of our city and try and maintain it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Graham. Pamela Van Ireland, followed by Mark Maniscalco, followed by Andrew Gonbiner.
Hi. I'm going to be reading this. As we all know, a few years ago, national, several national firms entered the short-term vacation rental market in Malibu, and we're here to discuss an ordinance to address all of the many problems arising from their participation in our community. I'm a licensed Realtor in Malibu, and I own a company called Vacation Rental Malibu, but I share the City Council's concerns and concerns of my Malibu neighbors. The Malibu Realtor community has also been negatively affected by this national phenomenon, and I want to be part of the solution. I have carefully read the proposed ordinance on short-term vacation rentals in Malibu, and I agree, it is appropriate. I respectfully ask that you consider one minor addition, which will hopefully have a major impact, and that is to allow licensed Realtors in Malibu to book short-term vacation rental homes, to let the homeowners sub out themselves in the booking and managing of the short-term vacation rentals, as this is a business, this is a professional business, and there's a lot of amateurs running the show right now, and I think that's why we're having all the problems. I think that by adding this short provision, the city will have ensured a more positive outcome, and it won't cost the city anything. As the owner of a vacation rental business and a local Realtor, I vet people and turn down more bookings than I accept, thereby protecting my clients' homes and neighbors alike. I make sure prospective clients check out. I vet them, I hold them responsible, and I make sure that they understand their responsibilities in leasing a short-term home. Unlike the national companies, I do not allow instant bookings. I don't let anybody come in unvetted. Unlike the national companies, I demand a large security deposit to ensure their compliance with the rules. I get between five and $15,000 per stay. That's what makes the guests follow the rules, like no on-street parking, no noise after 10 o'clock, no parties, et cetera. If there's nothing at stake, they don't care. It's serious. And in my vetting process, I know where the clients live, where they work, and I do internet searches, and I know everything about them, and only then do I let them book a property in Malibu. You'll never know that I have a listing next door to you because I do my job. I care, and so do the other Realtor, the other real estate agents in Malibu. It's our community, we want to take care of it. And if the city's willing to add this one minor modification, we can take the place of the homeowners, and we can undertake the responsibility for guest conduct and property owner compliance. And as a result, the Realtors could negate the need for owners to be on the premises all the time because we would be doing our jobs and be available 24/7. The state of California requires a licensed Realtor to handle leases 30 days or more outside of the homeowner, and I think why not let us handle them within 30 days as well? This one simple addition would not cost the city anything, and it would put us in charge. This one simple addition would not cost the city anything, and it would put us in charge of enforcing our own bookings and secure the safety and the enjoyment involved and not cause any problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Maniscalco, followed by Andrew Gombiner, followed by Norm Haney.
My name is Mark Maniscalco, and I own a four-unit building on Malibu Road. I run my building in a very unique way. One of my units serves as my primary residence. One unit is rented out on a yearly basis to a local Malibu business owner, and the other two are used as short-term rentals. I have been doing this for over three years and never had one problem, one party, or one neighborhood complaint. In fact, I actually had more neighborhood complaints with my long-term tenants, which is the reason I switched to short-term rentals. I closely watch who rents my units, how many people are on-site, and I have a property manager that checks people in and out. I read the entire staff report on the new proposed ordinance. Malibu has definitely come a long way in the last three years. This draft is three years old, and it's getting better. The main ordinance is a fair compliance, but if you add the amendment, it is not a compromise. I think all types of properties in Malibu should be able to take advantage of short-term rentals. The newly addition amendment for home-sharing is too strict, and homeowners need the money just as much as the city. The newly affected ordinance does not affect my situation, but my neighbor lives less than one feet away and is greatly affected. She has one of the smallest homes on Malibu Road, less than 900 square feet with no guest house. She will be unable to rent her property in order to pay for her upkeep, property taxes, other expenses, so she will be forced to get a reverse mortgage now. There is no way that the owner could be on-site in such a tiny home. I think the city should put in an ordinance that gives every homeowner an equal opportunity to take advantage of short-term rentals. You can issue a permit system as presented and pass the original ordinance without the amendment. The same goal would be achieved by adding enforcement, and you can shut down the bad apples, which is why we're all here today. A 24/7 property manager that lives in Malibu is more than sufficient to manage the short-term rental issues. An on-site manager provides the same outcome. I have a property manager that's less than 500 feet away, and I've never had a problem that hasn't been handled within 30 minutes. It is crazy to think with the amendment that a full-time resident of 40 years cannot rent out their house if they are not on-site, but it is okay for someone to park a motorhome on PCH in front of their home without a permit or TOT tax. A $30 million TOT tax over the next 10 years is a lot of money. Many people talk about how short-term rentals take away from the city's quality of life. Quality of life in its most basic form is most easily achieved by money. A poor city like Detroit has no money and no way of life. With the TOT funds, the city can afford more activities for kids, like the skate park that always keeps getting denied, parks for children, and money to renovate schools to keep them up to date. It is not a great way of life that we live in a city where a movie theater goes out of business, 50% of Malibu Country Mart is pop-up stores, and a burger joint with PCH visibility goes out of business in less than a year. We need short-term rentals to fill our restaurants, buy from our small independent shops, and more importantly, get them to come out to Malibu. Most of the reason why Uber drivers come to Malibu is to take short-term rental guests to and from LAX. Imagine trying to order an Uber if they leave. I get that all the bad apples can ruin neighborhoods, so let's put in a system for everyone, then take away the privilege once it gets abused. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Gombiner, followed by Norm Haney, followed by Bruce Silverstein.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Gombiner, and I have owned a multifamily property on Malibu Road for over 30 years. While the latest draft ordinance is an improvement over the previous discussions of an all-out ban on short-term rentals, what is before the council this evening still goes too far. This proposed ordinance will result in a significant reduction in the number of STRs, and my fear continues to be the immense financial consequences the city will endure as a result. While this draft ordinance is not a ban, based on how restrictive it is on single-family homes, and given that single-family homes comprise the majority of STRs in Malibu, adopting it would eliminate more than half the TOT revenue the city relies on annually. The independent study performed by Rafftelis points out that a partial ban will result in the elimination of the city's reserves in just 10 years, and the study did not even consider the loss of sales tax revenue generated by the visitors who stay at short-term rentals. So the city's reserves will be eliminated even faster than forecasted. And don't forget how the loss of reserves will affect the city's credit rating, thereby driving up the loan payments on the large sums of money the city owes. What about a natural disaster? Does anybody in this room believe for one second that Malibu won't experience another natural disaster over the next 10 years? I think not. And how many millions will that next disaster set the city back? Why now, so soon after the Woolsey Fire, would our city leaders consider such a significant loss of income? I just don't get it. I implore the council to reconsider placing such onerous restrictions on single-family STRs. Do not place financial hardship on the city and many of its homeowners simply because a small group of people are mismanaging their STRs. Taking away an STR permit for two or three violations will give the ordinance all the teeth it needs to be effective in rooting out the bad actors. Owners or managers on-site are unnecessary, as is limiting STRs to spring and summer. And by the way, how does an owner or manager stay on-site unless the home has a guest house, which most do not? Clearly, most visitors and hosts do not want to share accommodations with each other, so this is a de facto ban on most single-family STRs. Please reject this partial STR ban, as Malibu simply cannot afford it. I urge you to direct staff to draft an ordinance that won't place unnecessary financial burdens on longstanding homeowners who have always been considerate of their neighbors. In doing so, you'll preserve Malibu's strong economy so it can continue to heal and rebuild after last year's terrible disaster. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Norm Haney, followed by Bruce Silverstein, followed by Michael Lustig, who has eight minutes provided. Your other people are here.
Thank you for the opportunity, council members, for the chance to opine on this issue. First of all, I agree with John Maza. I think he's made some very good points. Second, let's just make the assumption that I am a real estate investor, and I go to Malibu Road and I find a six-unit condominium, and I say, hey, I'm going to turn this into a hotel. So what do I have to do to do that? Make an application? Not really. I can simply start leasing it out, short-term, advertise it, and whether I'm there or not doesn't make any difference. Do I have to meet the side yard setback requirements? No, because it's already there. How about the front yard setbacks or the backyard setbacks? No. How about 40% of your property dedicated to landscaping? No. How about another 25 dedicated to open space? No. How about spending three years trying to get an approval for a project that's already in the commercial zone? No, I don't have to do anything. I just have to list it. It is a commercial use in a residential community, and if they want a commercial use, they should go to a commercial property and go through the steps you have to go through. Provide the two parking places for each room. If you have a condominium that's got three bedrooms, that's six cars. Good luck with that. But that's what everyone has to do that is doing it the right way. It's very simple. It's about the use. It's not about the money that people make or that the city makes. If you have a residential use, it should be residential. If you have a commercial use, you can do whatever it says in the commercial. John said that the LCP doesn't really have any statement with regard to short-term or long-term rentals. If that's the case, and it is, then it's up to the city to make a determination as to how they want to handle it. If you go to the coastal commission, I agree with John that they want to make Malibu one big hotel or motel. That's really what their objective is. They don't, I shouldn't go any further with this comment. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next is Bruce Silverstein, followed by Michael Lustig, followed by Steve Euring.
Good evening again. I have three comments, possibly four if time permits. First of all, Michael will be able to speak to this better, but it's my understanding that the proposed ordinance doesn't reflect the substance of what this council previously decided to have brought back to it. So my question is, when is the city council going to get tired of city employees who answer to council by not doing what they are told and instead subvert what council expressly wishes for them to do? This is not the first time. I have only been actually paying attention to what goes on in this government for the past year, and I just see it time and time again in one tiny year, that the staff does what it wants, the council says what it wants, but it doesn't get back what it says. Second point, no need to adopt interim legislation. Not only is there no need to adopt interim legislation, it shouldn't be adopted. What it will do, as I understand it, is condone and authorize conduct that may end up being prohibited. That doesn't make any sense, especially since you don't currently know what you're going to finally do. And query, what happens if your final ordinance doesn't get approved? What if you go forward with something later and you need other approvals, like coastal, and you don't get what you want? You'll have already set a precedent for what is permitted. There's no reason to do that, especially since what you're permitting in the interim is probably prohibited. Third point, what is the current state of the law? I hear different opinions on it. From what I can tell, the state of the law is that short-term rentals, we're talking nightly, occasionally, weekly, are not permitted in areas zoned residential. If they're not permitted, they're not permitted. I heard one of the prior speaker who owns the vacation rental company, she said quite clearly, this is a professional business. That's exactly what it is. It's not supposed to be operating in residential areas. For the most part, although you do hear at these meetings from citizens, residents who do own houses that they rent sometimes, for the most part, the people that want the short-term rentals are not the residents of Malibu. They're people who own a property in Malibu that is not their residence, they're not your constituents. Your constituents don't want this. Last point I want to make is the financial analysis. The financial analysis, I pointed this out at the subcommittee meeting, did not include the Woolsey Fire settlement that at that point was certain to occur and now has in fact occurred, so it's not worth the paper it's written on. The other thing is, it doesn't matter. If brothels are not permitted in Malibu, you can't consider how much money they bring into the city in deciding whether to enforce the law against them. And I don't think you would allow offshore drilling just because it would make money for the city. You've got ample money, but you don't, money's not the factor here. The factor here is quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Michael Lustig. If the other people whose names are in your packet will just raise your hands. Haley Moss. Yes? Sharon Barovsky. Wendy Carroll. Rosemary Sampson. Petriks Zalinskas? Okay, thank you. Okay, you have eight minutes.
We're good. Madam Mayor, Council, I'm speaking again tonight on behalf of the Malibu Coalition that includes several presidents and board members of HOAs, other organizations, and the 400 residents who signed our petition. We represent over 1,000 households and nearly 2,000 voters. I think Lloyd said it really well at the last hearing. Malibu has always been tribal. Each of our neighborhoods has its own issues and political priorities that make unity difficult. Over the years, we've become deathly proficient at disagreeing on everything, including when we agree that we agree on something. I made light of it last time, but I assure you, the gravity and significance of why we are united is not for laughs. This is a rare and special occurrence. Let's not discount the sobriety of the moment. When crisis looms, be it a natural disaster or a real threat to our sovereignty, we drop the tribal baggage and come together as friends and neighbors in search of solutions. The members of this council are also our friends and neighbors. So we're not here tonight with pitchforks and rage, but our first request is to respectfully ask our city attorney and staff to acknowledge and embrace the importance of our unity by acting in service of what we're asking of the city. At the last council hearing, you agreed with us and made a motion to adopt a version of Santa Monica's ordinance. We are deeply grateful for your action to do it right. I also want to thank each of you for taking the time to meet and allowing me to highlight the crucial language from Santa Monica that puts the council in control and makes enforcement possible. We appreciate your consideration of the additional provisions we've asked for. If it's too complicated to add them now, we can put that piece aside. It's the difference between getting an A or a B. Many people don't understand the acronym ZTA. For more than two years, we've referred to the ZTA as the Proposed Short-Term Rental Ordinance. We rejected it at planning. We came to council in July of 2018 to fix it, but we were forced to come back, calling for a total ban in September of 2018 because it still didn't do what council had asked for. We thought it was dead, but it keeps coming back. It's painfully obvious at this point that ZTA stands for "The Zombie Is Trying Again." I'm fond of a euphemism that says the reward for patience is more patience, but we've reached the point where enough is enough, and that's what's brought us together. The zombie text amendment is even more dangerous now as an interim measure, and believe it or not, I'm going to make this simple. Let's compare the two documents side by side. Our version of Santa Monica, let's call that one the Malibu Rules. When it's implemented and enforced, it will do the following. It reduces the number of listings by a little more than half. The commercial whole-unit rentals go away. Requiring host on-site mitigates the nuisances and stops the party houses. The concession on multifamily brings back a smaller number of units than we'd like, but that's okay, we're not going to let the perfect get in the way of the good. And here's the great thing, it treats all of the short-term rental companies equally. It requires all of them to collect and remit the TOT. It gives you the tools to take down the non-compliant listings, and the best thing about it is, it's been adjudicated and upheld by the Ninth Circuit three times. Now let's look at Airbnb's zombie. It does not reduce the number of STRs by a single listing, nor does it mitigate any of the negative effects. It doesn't contain any of the definitions, restrictions, or platform accountability language that work together to make enforcement possible. In fact, it does exactly the opposite, because it codifies, legalizes, and creates permits for every existing STR. The most dangerous thing is that it potentially grandfathers them too. Now, I've maintained decorum by raising red flags, calling it Airbnb's joke, and repeatedly warning you that this thing is a booby trap. The zombie is in exactly the same form with misleading language that Airbnb sold to cities everywhere, and everywhere it goes, it fails. The only thing that beats a bad idea is a better, more truthful one. Passing the ZTA is a mortally bad idea that hurts every one of us. We are vehemently opposed to passing the ZTA for any reason, so the resident's answer is a hard and final no. And after you kill the zombie, there's one more thing that's absolutely crucial. The clock has run out. There is no more time. Our election is in November, so we are asking council to direct staff to set and adhere to a schedule that will allow for the draft of the new Malibu Rules to go to planning commission before bringing it here for two readings and passage with an implementation date of October 1st, 2020. So tonight's the night. It's got to happen, or it's over. We will have all failed, and you will have sent a time bomb to the next council. So we need two things. Vote no on the ZTA and make a motion that promises us that you will pass and implement the Malibu Rules before the election. So before I finish, I would like to ask the members of the coalition and the residents in these chambers who agree with the coalition statement to stand up and show that we are united. Okay, thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Steve Euring, followed by Sam Hall Kaplan, followed by Craig Hill.
Good evening, council. This is déjà vu all over again. I mean, three years, I think, one of the speakers said that we've been chasing this thing. Now, I think you've heard tonight from the speakers, starting with John, through Graham, through Michael, all you need to know about what we're trying to accomplish here. I think what I want to point out is across the world... I think what I want to point out is across the world, cities and communities have recognized the problems they have with short-term rentals. And over the last year, they've been taking drastic steps to try and fix that problem. You've got a path to follow. You've got examples you can use. You've got an adjudicated ordinance that it should be easy for us to put together. I do ask you to follow the advice of the speakers who have come before me, and let's get this thing done. And I just want to emphasize one comment that Gray made: enforcement. We said at the Planning Commission last night, we had an issue where a house had had two unpermitted buildings that had complaints against them for the last 18 years. Nobody did anything. So enforcement—if we're going to pass this, we've got to make sure we can enforce it, and I hope you will not only pass the ordinance, but also make sure we get the enforcement component we need to make this thing work carefully. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sam Hall Kaplan, followed by Craig Hill, followed by Richard Lawrence.
Thank you. The points have already been made. I just would like to put a little bit in perspective. A people hire A people. B people hire C people. And this council is sinking in a sea of Cs. Direct staff, take control. You were elected. We have a de facto mayor that—that abuses and abuses the privilege. This is a city that hasn't been managed. It's been mismanaged. Here's an opportunity to prove this tonight, to move ahead. It would take—I would view it—one hour. One hour, not a year. One hour to change that ordinance, to make it apply to Malibu. Do it. Be leaders. Thank you.[732.05][732.05][applause]
Thank you. Could the audience please hold the applause? Thank you. Craig Hill, followed by Richard Lawrence, followed by Randy Turtle.
Good evening, Council. Please listen to Mr. Lustig. I've spoken—I've had several in-depth meetings with him. He knows what he's talking about, and he's brought together a remarkable coalition of disparate interests. The interim ZTA is a mistake which paradoxically you allowed by doing your job too well, I think. As I've been sitting up there in a different context, I appreciate your decision process. You have to pull together a variety of inputs, thinking fast on the fly, and in the end, you want to reach a point where you've accomplished something tangible, helpful, covering the bases without going too far. You're acrobats working without a safety net, under a stopwatch. So you got the ordinance mostly right, but then saw that what you perceived as a gap and naturally felt the urge to stick a plug in it. But the interim ZTA is a square peg where the legal context is a round hole. You've got two firm legal positions to work within. One is a Supreme Court decision, the other Santa Monica ordinance, which is past state appellate review. They constrain the legal terrain. The Supreme Court confirmed in its Moore decision that single-family residential zones must be comprised of families or non-transient groups that live in closely-like families. But now we also have the Ninth Circuit case upholding the Santa Monica Home Share Ordinance, which finds they are legal if they remain owner-occupied. That's a narrow—the Santa Monica ordinance creates a narrow exception to the commercial prohibition. That's what your constraint. So the ZTA is both illegal under the current city zoning, single-family residential, and doesn't fit within the narrow exception that the court carved out for Santa Monica. Legitimizing a broader exception just then to remove it sets you up for takings claims. It's also just impractical. You'd be asking hosts and residents to switch gears several times, to steer through several legal regimes, give them a single regime to be able to plan for. I imagine the Planning Commission would hold a special meeting sooner. I think we'd have the votes for that, so we can get this on the road. I agree with John Maza that Coastal doesn't need to be asked. If they appeal it for some reason, so be it, but there's no need to assume that would happen. And please, as Mr. Lustig asks, include the updated provisions passed by Santa Monica two months ago requiring the host to be a long-term primary resident and to be onsite during guest occupancy. And finally, for effective enforcement, you should include the Laguna Beach requirement of a license to advertise. That provides a simple, cut-and-dried method of identifying bootleg STRs. A code enforcement person can just look them up online with a few keyword searches. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Richard Lawrence, followed by Randy Turtle, followed by Ryan Embry.
I'm Richard Lawrence. I'm the president of the Malibu Township Council and have some thoughts. Unlike some of the other people who have spoken before, I don't have a prepared speech. I don't want to talk about the minutia of what's wrong. But when you look at something like short-term rentals, I want to compare it to the discussion that I've heard since I moved here in '02 about PCH. Why don't we raise the speed limit to 80? Because that's what people are doing, and there's no enforcement. You know, I see hardly anybody getting a ticket. I read in the paper or in Nextdoor that somebody got a ticket in Malibu West. Well, that's one, you know. But how are we going to—what do we do? Have two people knocking on doors to see who's doing what? I guess that's what has to be done. I mean, I don't know how it could be done with all of these—the—the number of short-term rentals that there are. The other thing that really bothers me—and I said it last time—is that doing business with a company that—are companies that don't allow you any access to see any backup of the deal, you're just trusting somebody who has not proven to be very, you know, by my mind, honest or forthright or whatever. And, you know, I moved here—I lived in Brentwood for 30 years. I moved here because, one, I used to come down here, go to the Malibu coffee shop. There was a feeling in Malibu about what it was, which was not what Maui has become in terms of all the commercial stuff that's going on there. I—I would like to see the law, which says that short-term rentals are illegal, to be enforced. Enforce that. Why are we making, you know, left and right turns to allow something that basically, you know, when the city was incorporated in '91, was thought about and put into the local plan that says you can't have a commercial business in that residential area? And I think there's so many residential areas. The other thing—the last thing I want to talk about is a personal thing where—I live on Las Tunas Beach. Not 100 yards from me, there are 35 used RVs sitting there where people are totally disrespecting everything and anything that anybody in this room would want. Where's the enforcement? You know, there's one guy there. He's got a thing that says "Cowgirls Rule" on the back of his motorhome. So when I walk my dog, I see this, and he's been there for six months. Now, does he move the thing a few feet so that he can stay within the law? The law's bad, you know? I mean, it's not a trailer park. They did something on 1,800 feet of highway where they reinforced it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Randy Turtle, followed by Ryan Embry, followed by Sue Peck, who has an extra minute.
Randy Turtle gave her time to me. Would you prefer I wait until my name's called later?
I'm sorry. I'm now—I'm seeing that on the slip. So Sue, I see that you have—Randy Turtle, would you raise your hand, please? And Doug Carroll? Okay. Is that it? Anybody else?
No.
Okay. So you have five minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor and honorable City Council members, my name is Sue Peck, and I've lived in Malibu as a full-time resident since 1969. I attended the recent City Council meeting to consider the financial impact of banning short-term rentals and provided a brief about my short-term rental program and why it works as a win-win for my long-term tenants, my short-term visitors, and our city. I'm supportive of the proposed short-term rental ordinance provisions allowing multifamily buildings to offer short-term rentals. As I testified last month, my short-term rental program works because I have a limited number of short-term rentals among my long-term tenants. I support limiting the short-term rentals to two rentals per building. This approach prevents entire apartment buildings from being used as makeshift hotels. I support the city's efforts to put a stop to this. I continue to believe that short-term rentals in multifamily buildings are an asset to the city. I successfully paired long-term and short-term rentals in my multifamily buildings year round. I have a long and successful track record without any complaints in a decade of operations. I look forward to continuing to offer these short-term rentals in my buildings. I thank the City Council and the staff for its efforts, and I appreciate your openness in allowing owners of multifamily buildings to provide short-term rentals on a limited basis. I appreciate your time, and I thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ryan Embry, followed by Rebecca Thompson, followed by Scott Dietrich.
With all respect to the people who I think submitted way before me—I don't know why I'm being called now. I—I was one of the last four or five speakers to submit before you called time. So I—I speak now or I speak later, but I just wanted to make sure that the city protocol is being followed for the order. What's up to you?
I—I will just say, I've called the slips in the order they were handed to me.
All right. Can I have my time? I would like you to revise your proposed ordinance to include in its definitions for HOAs any property that is controlled or contains a property covenant condition or restriction on its title, and that the noticing requirement for other properties controlled by the same document be required to be noticed by the applicant. Not all HOAs are quick, respond, or proactive, or even active. And they're not even all HOAs. Again, they could be a road association or a loose association, but they still may be covered by CCNRs. The second is that the financial impact analysis is—is a stretch. It—it is a multi-year projection, and it's based on an illegal activity at the moment. And second, that the city amassed a very large reserve prior to this million-dollar-a-year tax revenue that is being cited. The city is not dependent upon this funding. It's potential funding, and so would parking meters be a source of revenue. You can give half the town tickets for parking for more than 20 minutes at somewhere, and you would have a lot of revenue. It'd be just like Beverly Hills, West Hollywood, or Santa Monica where you'd have trouble. You would be addicted to the revenue. The other issues that I wanted to bring up is that the concept of a lesser violation is a betterment and is an acceptable remedy. And I remember Kristi Hogan giving the same argument 20 years ago to a—a pole sign in the civic center area, and the grandfathering required it to be removed, and the entity said, "Well, the pole sign's got two poles. How about we just make it a one-pole sign?" And the—the answer was, "No. Noncompliance is noncompliance, and you submit a compliant alternative, or you take it down, or you stop." And we've lost sight of the rule of law and land use in this city, and you need to correct it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rebecca Thompson, followed by Scott Dietrich, followed by—I believe it's Robert Graham. Okay. Scott Dietrich, followed by Robert Graham, followed by Tatiana Good.
Thank you, Mayor Ferr and Council. We once really were proud of Malibu as a way of life, and I think it's very important that we don't forget that. If we submit this to Coastal, who sees Malibu as a way of Airbnb, I think we're asking for a big problem. So I agree with John Maza and Michael and others. Don't submit this to Coastal. If they come at us, fine, but there's no reason to go there. I think the staff did a great job on the permanent ordinance, and I congratulate them for that. The key elements: owner occupied. If we have that, we eliminate so many problems. The second thing we need is enforcement, and several people have spoken on enforcement. We don't need that interim ordinance that's been proposed. It—it's going to create more problems than it solves. We can enforce what we're doing right now because what we must stop is the party houses. The party houses offend everybody. Corporations buying a house in Malibu, they don't care. They're not our neighbors. They're not good neighbors. And you've heard in past meetings, person after person get up and cry because the problems aren't being dealt with. This is—this is so off the scale when, you know, they've called the sheriff 10 times, 20 times, they and their neighbors, and nothing gets done. So we need to enforce. The last thing that I'd like to deal with—some people have said, "Well, we need the money. It's not fair that they can't have an off-site ownership and do an Airbnb to support the house." The reality is rents in Malibu, long-term rents, have escalated so far and so fast in the last couple of years, especially because of Woolsey, that anybody renting a house is making more than they ever dreamed of. They don't need to rely on short-term rentals to do this. So thank you for dealing with this for so long. Let's pass the ordinance and the permanent ordinance. Fast-track it, as John said at the beginning, and finally get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Robert—I believe it's Graham, followed by Tatiana Good, followed by Lloyd Ahern. Tatiana Good, followed by Lloyd Ahern, followed by Ann Payne. Okay. So Tatiana—nope. Okay. Lloyd Ahern, you have an extra minute, and then we will have Yelena Zeltzer and Monica—I believe it's Biraseno.
Visualize a person driving down Pacific Coast Highway on Car—near Carbon Beach where PC Greens was. It's an easy Tuesday afternoon, 2 o'clock. He's driving, and he sees a police officer coming. He's going to Santa Monica. He's a police officer going into Malibu. And he looks down at his speedometer just to see how fast he's going. He's going 62 miles an hour, and he goes, "Oh, God." And he looks up in his rearview mirror, and he goes, "That guy's turning around." So the first thing he does is he takes his foot off the accelerator, and he finds a way to get to 45 without looking like a—a panic artist. So we all know that. Okay. Tonight, when you're thinking about this—this ordinance, think about—no law is worth anything without enforcement. I know—I had no coordination whatsoever. I've never heard so many words. I was going to say it 50 times. Now I'm only going to say it 40. Repetition is everything in politics and advertising. Enforcement is so key to this thing. So when we're making—when you guys are making this law, as you make the law, make enforcement. Don't make the law— Don't make the law, and then afterwards make the enforcement. Just because we're going to do more with enforcement than we are with the law. The thing about President Reagan had a great line. Trust, but verify. I think ours should be verify and then trust. We've got to turn the tables on these guys. This is an international corporation that does not care about us in any way, shape, or form. And you know that's true. They're worse than the MRCA, and they're worse than Santa Monica Unified School District, if that's possible. Yeah, thank you. It is tough. But it's a three-way tie for terrible. Don Henley wrote a song, which half the people or a quarter of the people in this room know him. Hotel California. Let's not let him get a sequel going Hotel Malibu. He's got enough money as it is. When you're working on this ordinance, think about the two Cs that I've thought of: creativity and courage. You've got to be creative so that you can outfox the fox, and the fox is you know who. We do not want to get hung up in the LCP and put the burden of proof. We should put the burden of proof on them. Put the bill into a fair law, and then let them deal with it. If it goes to them, it's going to be a massive amount of arbitrage that are going to be put in it, and it's going to be stuck in a dark cave, and it's going to die. Now, the last thing I want to say is we're one year and one month out from the fire. And we built a certain amount of houses, got them started, and then there's going to be a whole big limbo period. And Mikey Pearson said the most important thing right after the fire. He says, "There's just some people that aren't equipped, nor do they want, nor do they know they cannot build a house." So about a year out from now, on a, did I have four minutes? Okay. We have an economic disruption. And when that happens, things happen, and we could have a bunch of speculators coming in and wanting to build houses when the lots get cheap. And we don't want them to be building. We want to send the law out right now saying, "Don't come to Malibu thinking you're going to build Airbnbs when lots get cheap." It's a possibility, so think about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Yelena Zeltzer, followed by, I'm trying, Monica Birasino.
Monica Birasino, I'll pass.
Okay. Followed by Richard Johnson.
Good evening, council members. My name's Yelena Zeltzer. I'm here on behalf of Unite Your Local 11. We represent over 25,000 hospitality workers in the greater Los Angeles area. Our members bear the brunt of the housing crisis that is exacerbated by the short-term rental rentals. The proposed interim ordinance outlines a three-tiered system that may not adequately protect housing and has enforcement issues. The City of Santa Monica ordinance has been one of the most successful at regulating SDRs and only allows primary residence housing. Non-primary residence permits should not be allowed. Even if it is only to be rented from April 1st to September 30th, this still incentivizes leaving a unit unoccupied the entire year. Multifamily permits should not be allowed, even if kept at two units per building, because it similarly incentivizes taking units off the rental market that would be leased to families or individuals that live in Malibu year-round. Currently, the code disallows multifamily rentals, and this provision seems to be weakening that. What if multifamily buildings only have three or four units? Two of those units can be short-term rentals, as long as the third one is rented to a long-term family. If the goal is to have strong restrictions around short-term rentals, only permanent residence housing should be allowed. This is the model in Santa Monica and has been upheld by the courts. Regarding enforcement, the ordinance, as written, leaves large gaps where enforcement is concerned. This makes for a weak ordinance and will ultimately make the city's job more difficult in enforcing its regulations. The biggest challenge to STR regulation is enforcement, given the unprecedented proliferation of SDRs and ever-evolving online platforms. Cities have enacted private rights of action in their ordinances so that affected persons may contribute to the enforcement process by bringing civil suits to address noncompliance. Additionally, city ordinances have provided authority for the issuance of service and service of administrative subpoenas on platforms to ensure that they have the data necessary for the efficient and effective enforcement of the ordinances. As an example, we have recently identified a property located at 31550 Victoria Point Road that is listed on multiple platforms, including Airbnb, VRBO, Luxury Home Rentals, and JMF Malibu, which is the owner's own online platform, for which no TOT aside that possibly remitted directly by Airbnb has been remitted to the City of Malibu as of September 30th, 2019, when we got the records. This non-owner-occupied property seems to be managed by several entities across multiple platforms, including JMF Malibu, an entity tied to the property's owner, Jeffrey Fish, and Stay-Awhile Villa as a luxury vacation rental company. With the enforcement of multiple platforms and multiple entities, enforcement becomes extremely cumbersome. The proposed ordinance should provide robust enforcement provisions for agencies and individuals to ensure that platforms comply with local legislation, including a private right of action and authority for administrative subpoenas. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Richard Johnson, followed by Brian Merrick. And as stated, I will adhere to us not taking speaker slips after this item started. So I'm sorry, Larry. I have a hard time with this last name. Sir, I believe it was you. I'm so sorry. I really need to apply this rule uniformly. Thank you. I apologize.
Hello, everybody. It's a beautiful day in the neighborhood. Won't you be my neighbor? That's a quote from Mae Ringe, I believe. Well, we can certainly keep people out of the neighborhood. I know that we have a lot of nimby's, and some people have houses and/or apartments that should not be rented because the neighbor's 10 feet away. Some people have multi-acre properties that are entirely fenced, and the home and the property surrounded by vegetation that keeps them from the neighbors. Some people have such a home and don't even rent it out for parties. They rent it out for things like lovely family reunions. Lumping all of these rentals into one thing would seem to me to be unfair. There should be a differentiation between people who have an apartment right where the door's right five feet away from your door than someone who is several hundred or 1,000 feet away from another property. I hope you all have a lovely day.
Thank you. Our next and last speaker is Brian Merrick.
There you go, yeah. Okay. All right. So thank you for the opportunity. Contrary to popular belief, as a real estate professional, I am not in favor of short-term rentals. I'm not a big fan of them. They don't do a whole lot for me, for my neighborhood, or for anyone else, really, other than generating income for people who may need it. But I am more against government outreach, overreach, and trying to regulate everyone's life. I feel that I can do a lot better than any five people who are elected to do so. But anyhow, at the bottom of all that is that I'm trying to say I'm mostly neutral on this subject. So whichever way it goes, it goes. I'm not here to say one way or the other. I have read the ordinance, and I have a couple of comments. One is onsite wastewater treatment permit. I think that you need to differentiate if you do go forward with this stuff, that, you know, just someone who's renting out one room shouldn't have to go through that process because it can be an extremely costly process. For whole property ones, yeah, they should do it because we don't know who's going to be living in those houses. But for the little old lady that rents out a bedroom in her house, she shouldn't have to go through the hassle and potential expenses of an onsite wastewater in that way. How do I change it to the next one? Is this it? Oh, there you go. Okay. So there is one, as far as the April 1st to September 30th, because, you know, you don't live at the property more than 183 days. I don't understand why you would differentiate between all the properties because I know for a fact of multiple, multiple families who still own property out here, who use their property, rotate it through family members, and not one of them lives there for 183 days. So establishing primary residence would unfairly affect those people because they use it in between these rentals. If they rent it out for a full year, they don't ever get to use their house. So there is that to think of. And then the last thing I want to bring up is the corporation designation. I know that we need to stop these corporations that are strictly in this way. But again, there are actually more than slide two. There are more people in this town that hold properties as LLCs and corporations and live in their own houses and never do Airbnb or short-term. So I think that also is something to concern yourself with. I think that the final decision should be with you guys. It should not go to the planning commission. I've seen a majority of them already come before you today. They have an agenda. I don't think any of them were elected. You're the ones that are elected, and you need to make the decisions, not them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes our public comments. I'm being asked if we can take a break. I'm sorry, what's your name, sir? Oh, I was saying Graham. I'm so sorry. I had a hard time reading it.
Good evening. I will be very brief. I've got three or four points to make. First of all, short-term rentals in the City of Malibu are property right. Short-term rentals in a property has been a long practice in Malibu and predates the city ordinance in 1991. The fact that you now try and limit them is a violation of property rights. And you can expect to be sued, and you can expect the city attorneys spending their careers defending the City of Malibu. Now, the other thing that should be added is when this was discussed before, there was also an issue of having residential managers have the same rights as property owners that live on-site. And I think that's something that should be included in this ordinance. Now, just since Michael made a nice gesture for the city council, how many people here are Airbnb or short-term rental people? I think we could double if we had some notice that it would have any effect. Right now, it seems that Michael Lustig and his group have undue influence on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes public comments, and we will take a five-minute break and resume at 6:35.
Please do not discuss this with the council members as the public discussion has been closed on this item.
Would everyone like to take their seats, please? Thank you. Okay, let's take our seats and begin. Do we have any council comments? Who'd like to go first?
Rick.
Thank you.
All right. Let's address some of the things that were brought forward by our citizenry. And I would like to note that, as was pointed out, can everybody hear me okay? As was pointed out, this is one of those rare issues that although not universal, I would say has brought together many of the heretofore factions who found themselves on the other side of the table. As evidenced by John Mazza sitting next to Sharon Borowski this evening. I think that's really wonderful. And it's also one of those big issues, you know, to frame it properly. This is like if there's a handful of big grizzly bears that the council has to wrestle and deal with and come out with a good solution. If not perfect, but, but good and not fair and not halfway and not, ah, why did we do that? But as good as possible. The advantage of, of the delays that we've had because of the fire, as I've said before, as I've stated before, is that we can coattail on what other cities have done, most notably Santa Monica. And as some of the speakers this evening have, have pointed out, they've expressed the idea that there are some pitfalls to doing this kind of halfway measure thing. Because we, we had this, I'll refer to this, the ZTA or the ordinance 458, I think it's called, which was brought before us in the fall of 2018. And when we had the last meeting where we talked about all of this, and I think there was pretty good consensus about, hey, we're lucky. Let's adopt the Santa Monica plan because not only has it stood up to legal scrutiny, but that seems to solve most of the problems in this very difficult minefield that we're facing. And then, you know, as the discussion went on, it's like, okay, well, let's also adopt the interim measure in the meantime that kind of memorializes and verifies maybe in the, our rules, some of the things that are going on now, which are kind of, it's sort of open season right now, I would say. It's open season and we're, we're trying to address this. And we've been dancing around it for a while. We've been dancing around it. And because we've been not putting our hands on it, it's good in a way because we've left our options open. So could you please address and don't necessarily come up with the solution? Because we're going to go up with a solution. But if you could talk about the pitfalls or some of the concerns that have been expressed by the citizenry about adopting the ZTA. And, and the reason I say this is because I am a simple person and I am a single-celled amoeba brain. And we're a single-celled amoeba town, really. We're a little Peewee town and I think we should look for simple solutions. And we're here in the Wild West of short-term rentals. And we want to get to there, which is the good solution that's already been, the path has been blazed by a town with bigger legal pockets than we have had and defended successfully. So I think we should go straight for that with the minimum amount of complications between here and there and not necessarily take this diversion where we're kind of memorializing and validating, I guess that's the word I'm looking for, validating some of this Wild West stuff that's going on right now. Is that a possibility? And can, what is your comment on that?
All right, I'll do my best to, to take that on. I think the, to look to, to sort of understand the ZTA and the implications of it, I think you should look back at the history of what the ZTA was brought in for and what the purpose of that is. And it was brought in because we don't have any prohibition on the books that explicitly says short-term rentals are not allowed in the city. And a long time ago, the city, you know, there was a fork in the road and, we can interpret the uses in the city as allowing in a residential zone, both short-term and long-term rental of the property to be a separate use or to be the same type of use as, you know, a long-term rental is allowed, a short-term rental be implicitly allowed. And so the city has been registering properties and collecting TOT for some period of time. And the city wanted to be able to have some regulations about some of the problems that we're developing because of short-term rentals and some of the nuisance issues. And so regulations were proposed to constrain how those were rented and also to put restrictions in there to define, because there was an issue in the multifamily especially about when it would constitute, when a structure that's being, that's being rented out that has multiple units, whether that would be a hotel and when it wouldn't be a hotel. And the purpose of this is just to, is to define in this, in the code so that we can be enforced exactly what type of short-term rentals allowed in the multifamily and to put the regulations on the short-term use. So there's no need to adopt this, this ZTA. We can just go straight to an LCP amendment and move forward with the, the Santa Monica home sharing ordinance. The idea, I think, here that was proposed by the city manager before is to bring this in so that in the interim, we can start ramping up and regulating some of the nuisance issues that are occurring in there. There's limitations, you need to have permits. You can't have certain violations or you lose the privilege of renting on a short-term basis right now. If you get a noise violation, it doesn't mean you can't rent your property anymore. It means you get a noise violation, you suffer the consequences of having a noise violation, not an elimination of ability to rent on a short-term basis. Also, the benefit too, is that you're going to start this amortization process of people that have been renting out on a, on a short-term basis of understanding that it's being constrained and it's becoming more and more limited and that they're going to receive notice now that you shouldn't be buying property in Malibu because the future is that it'll only be allowed for a home sharing purpose, not for a, I guess you would say a corporate, non-primary owner rental basis. So the difference between that and, and the home sharing ordinance you're proposing here is that that would be a change of use. When we're moving to prohibiting it throughout the city and only allowing it as a home, as a home share, that's a change from how we've been interpreting our code into what uses are allowed in our zone. And there's no question that we need an LIP amendment in order to go forward with that. We can't jump straight to just putting that in. The reason this ZTA is different is because it's not a new use. It's codifying what's allowed in the city and adding regulation to prohibit some of the negative effects from home sharing. I'm sorry, from a short-term rental use.
Okay, so if I can characterize what you just said, the primary purpose, primary, although there was another one, purpose of adopting the interim ZTA is that it provides some level of enforcement of, of existing problems?
Exactly, because right now, we can't stop people from renting on a short-term basis. We walk into court and say, our, you know, our code is, it only allows listed uses. And they're going to say, well, this is the same as a long-term use and it's been allowed and you've taken my registration. We're going to lose that case in court. If we have on the books that you need a short-term rental permit in order to rent in the city and you don't have a permit, or if you've lost your permit because you've had a number of parties at your residence, you've been violating the parking restrictions, the noise restrictions, then we can go into court and we can enforce it and we can, you know, we, we put in, the new penalties that we put in here, a thousand dollars per occurrence or the minimum daily rental rate, whichever is larger, would be a significant fine that would come into play. And that would be coming into play on June 1st. So there'd immediately be significant penalties coming on play, into play for people that are not registering or not behaving in accordance with the, with the ordinance. And that ordinance is a ZTA. So that can be rescinded or changed. You know, if you want to get rid of it, once you put it on the books, you don't want it there anymore, just eliminate it. You can because it's in our municipal code, so.
So the fears that are being expressed about, hey, you know, if you all of a sudden say all this stuff that we've been saying heretofore sorta illegal are now legal, it doesn't necessarily mean we can't turn that off later.
It's, it's not saying that it's legal. I mean, the fact is that we've been allowing this, this practice to occur in the city and saying that there's consequences if you don't conform your behavior to the requirements of the regulation. I also want to point out that with the, with the LIP amendment, Coastal doesn't write our, doesn't write our LIP. They don't control, you know, their role is for, our role is to propose what we want to have done in our city. We control our zoning and their decision is solely whether it complies with the Coastal Act. So, you know, they're not going to come in here and rewrite our, our ordinance. You know, if they, if they try to overreach and do something that, you know, say that, that whatever we propose is in violation of the Coastal Act and it's not, we have options at our disposal in order to challenge that.
Okay, thank you. So I, just to review, it sounds like the biggest downside of if we don't adopt the interim ZTA that we, we just continue on as we're doing right now.
Yes, I think the purpose why it was brought up to have it on an interim basis is there's been a lot of frustration with certain properties and this gives the opportunity for some kind of, for some relief.
Okay, good. And I wanted to illuminate that for everybody as to what, what it's all about. The other thing I wanted you to address is there's been some interest in fast-tracking our ultimate goal, which is to embrace a Santa Monica-style thing. And so is it possible to fast-track that? And do we have to wait? Can we not, you know, actually embrace that until the Coastal Commission gives us their, you know, thumbs up on that? Or can we just start doing it and not even ask Coastal Commission?
No, I mean, we're, like I said, we're, we're talking about a change of use here. And if we're talking about a change of use, it needs to be a certified LIP. Now, we can fast-track and we can move it through as fast as possible. And I think Bonnie has laid out before sort of the process you're looking at, but we can move that, you know, as fast as we can. At the same time, you know, we talked about the change here. You want to have an amortization period put in place too. So people understand, you know, adjust their expectations and realize that you can't run out on a short-term basis as you have been. You need to move to a home sharing or you need to move on to a long-term lease, lease situation. And this would, this process gives that time. You know, we can start providing notice and putting out notice to the public and inform everyone who's renting that we have registered right now that this is the future, this is what's been initiated. This is, and when it's passed, we can say this is when it's passed and it's when it's pending certification. We can start that process, which will aid us, you know, if there's ever an issue about not allowing enough amortization.
Okay, so if we didn't do the ZTA and we said, okay, we're just going to do the Santa Monica thing, when do you think, when is realistic to think that we could actually implement that legally?
I'm going to pass that to Bonnie. She's more familiar with the time it takes to process. There's 21-day notices. It has to go to planning commission, then has to come back here. It needs two readings and then it needs to be processed through Coastal.
Yeah, I mean, in a nutshell, what Trevor said is, is the process. The parts we can control, we could expedite all we want. We could probably get something through our city processes by spring, late spring. But then the next step would be submitted to the Coastal Commission. They would, you know, fit it into their queue of things that they need to agendize and work on. Whenever they, they would need to schedule it for a Coastal Commission meeting that is geographically proximate to Malibu. You know, for example, not have it up in the north part of the state since it affects us here. And then, once they approve it, it would most likely be with modifications. And so then it would come back to the city and the city council would then consider whether to adopt the ordinance with the Coastal Commission's suggested modifications. Then once, just assuming that you agreed with their modifications, the city council ordinance would then go back to the Coastal Commission, have to be reported by the executive director to the Coastal Commission. So it just, a lot of it depends on their, that back and forth with them about adoption locally, their modifications and everything. That, that part we don't control. So that's, that's why the LCP amendment process that comes with the Santa Monica-style ordinance, it kind of gets us into a calendar we can't really control.
Okay, that's the full-on official, signed by the Coastal Commission.
That's right.
Official route. Is there any, this is for you and both of you, I guess, and city manager also, is, can we not implement that program between now and that time with, can we do it with like local policies or anything like that?
No, it would be, it'd be a change of use. So we can't just put it in play. We, we're going to pass the ZTA with it, but it's not effective until it's certified by the Coastal Commission. We can put everything else in, in play that we've talked about, the regulation system. That's what the ZTA proposal would do. Since those are not changes of use, they need to go through the, that would, the part that would need to go through Coastal is already part of this proposed ZTA. The big difference between the ZTA and the, the LCP amendment is the restriction to home sharing. You would already have the majority of the ordinance already in play. If you go forward with the ZTA now, it would just be adjusted to move to the home sharing or if there are other changes that develop through the planning commission and the city council hearings on it.
Okay, I don't want to hug the microphone. I just wanted to, I think those are the big moving parts here and the, the sentiment that's been expressed by some of the members of the community who are neck-deep in the subject matter, not only here but in other places. So I wanted to throw that out for the, as the main moving parts of this discussion. And I wanted to, you know, hear what my fellow council members had to say on that. And I want to acknowledge that people are like, hey, let's just roll up our sleeves and get to work. We know what we want to do. We, we have got the, the goal in mind. Let's just cut the small talk and get to it. And what I'm trying to determine, can we do that? Can we just say, hey, let's stop the interim thing. Let's just go from point A to point B. And is it legal to do that? So we'll open it for everybody else's comments.
Thank you, Rick. Who would like to go next?
Okay, I was just writing my questions so that I could be more succinct, but I'll whack at it. Trevor, you had mentioned just a moment ago in your elaborations that we just couldn't simply go to the LCPA because we currently have something that we've had on the books or we're working with on the books and it gives the surety to both the tenants who are renting, the STRs, the STR owners. And that would be a change from one to another. If we enacted a ZTA. to another. If we enacted a ZTA, we'll have that change anomaly from ZTA to LCPA, and that could be construed as a taking as well.
You're saying if we pass the ZTA, and then the LCP amendment comes through, that they could still allege a taking, even though there's a gradual sort of winding down? Someone could always allege a taking, but in this case, we're moving to give people plenty of notice that the change is coming, they still have other uses that they can make of a property, you're not entitled to permanent, you permanently zone, having a certain type of zoning or use in the city, the city can amortize those things, but you know, you need to give the people time and then a fair opportunity to recover, you know, their investment, and, you know, that's the process that we're talking about. You can't stop someone from suing, but I would say that if we give them plenty of notice, and they have an opportunity, if you have a short-term rental, you can always run it out long-term. So, the amount of damage, you know, that they're going to allege, I think it's going to be mitigated to some extent in this situation.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, thank you. And so, we may face challenges one way or another, with ZTA, without ZTA, LCPA taking, as Bonnie had mentioned, a year. So, all these things are thrown into a blender, and then we have to, as administrators, hopefully help our residents out with their wishes. And it's been elaborated, to me, in meetings with a number of the speakers and others, that some people are willing to put up with the frustrations for the next six months to a year to have a stronger implementation of the Santa Monica rules as their final outcome, and believe me, they would be looking forward to it, and not having to learn the ZTA process, then change from the ZTA process to the LCPA process. And so, there's an equal amount of people that have feelings on both sides of this. I just wanted to add that, but I'm going to finish my question in a moment, I'll turn it over to other council members.
Okay, thank you. Skylar, Mikey?
I was hoping to hear from my more learned city council people, but that's all right. I want to, I want to start by backing up a second. I think I've listened to all sides, talked to people on both sides, received emails on both sides of this issue. I say sides, people that are for Santa Monica home share version, and people that are more, for more lenient or no restriction. And what I, I just want to acknowledge all the people that reached out, and it's been a lot of people. So, normally on small items, I at least thank people for their email. I have not been able to return all the emails, that's overwhelming this time. So, I want to thank everyone, I appreciate their input, and I think it's a, it's a really, it's, this is a, as has been said, kind of seminal moment for the city, and I really tried to get away from the details to really understand the big picture. And to me, this is the moment where we define our city moving forward, and it's, whatever we decide is going to impact people's lives, and I just want to say I take that seriously, and it's important, and it's not no small thing. But when I think about Malibu, and I grew up in a Malibu where this really wasn't an issue, we went away on vacation, generally my parents rented the house to pay for their vacation, but it wasn't, you didn't hear about short-term rentals, that wasn't a thing. We're in a different world now, and I think back on Malibu, and we're not going back there, and I look to the future, this is a residential town, this is not Laguna Beach, it's not, what is that place in Maui that's very commercialized, Lahaina, Lahui, whatever it's called, sorry, whatever the name is. This is a residential community, and I think this is the moment where we have to stand up for making Malibu a residential community into the future. So, I am curious what will happen, but I am in favor of a home share style ordinance, merely for the fact that I think it would eliminate all the problems that we see. I think it will lead to people that go away for two weeks, probably just ignoring us and renting it for two weeks and going away, and nobody knows, and that'll happen, but that's the enforcement issue we'll probably always deal with on anything we ever do, and maybe that's where, you know, if they do it through a real estate agent or something, it won't be noticed. I don't know the exact answer there, but I don't think that'll just disappear, and I don't think anyone will notice or care. So, then as far as the mechanism, I appreciate all the input, I appreciate the time Michael Lustig spent with me, we, went to me for an hour, I think it was more like three, and got into the weeds on a whole bunch of things, and I've met with Michael before, and one comment I had to him this time is I've never seen him so clear. I think the first time I met with him, he pulled out this chart or spreadsheet that was completely incomprehensible to me, but I grinned and nodded, and sure, that looks great, I have no idea what it says. Last time I met with him before this, I was confused on parts of his argument, and let him know that, and, but still, he kind of wound it all back together for me. So, I appreciate all the work he's done, especially spending the more time with him. His work isn't just about Malibu, it's going to cities all around this country, and knowing people all around the country, and the issues that other cities are dealing with are even more, I guess, upsetting to those that don't want short-term rentals than what we're dealing with. Other cities have it way worse. And so, we're at an era right now in this whole thing where we can kind of see what's worked and hasn't worked in other places. And I don't think there's a perfect answer, and I don't think the Santa Monica ordinance is perfect by any means, but I am curious to see how we end up with that with the Coastal Commission. And I know that's an issue that we want to ignore, so far, that hasn't really worked out. So, I'm in favor of that, and I think some of the little tweaks he and I talked about, which he submitted in public, in public letter, a letter that's public, are smart too. The place that I find myself at a lack to comment on is the ZTA. I understand the fear on it, I don't really fully understand every bit of why that could be a problem, because I really feel for the people that have really bad short-term rental houses next to them. And there's a, there's not a ton, to be honest, it's very, it's few, but the ones are, those people are really upset, and I don't blame them. I've been to their houses, I've seen their videos, I've talked to them at length, I get it, and I don't, I don't feel really comfortable abandoning them, but I don't want to miss our chance to define Malibu into the future either. So, I hear everything you're saying, and knowing the balance between all of it is something I look forward to hearing more of the other councils talk about. Thank you.
Thank you, Skylar.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, as Mikey and others said, for all the comments that we've received about this item. I too did meet with Michael, and obviously heard from a lot of people that want more lenient, if any restrictions at all, in regards to short-term rentals. Trevor, so, you're saying that ultimately we'll have to do an LCPA regardless to get sort of what we want, that's the way to go, that's what Santa Monica did, and that's what we have to do?
If we want to go to home sharing, then we need to do an LCP amendment.
Okay. Does...
Santa Monica, I think, is always interpreted and is being prohibited in their zone, so that's...
They never allowed it prior.
That's the stance that they took consistently.
We failed. Went for the dough. I guess that's just sort of what happened. But I remember when we were originally talking, I think we subpoenaed Airbnb a long time ago, maybe 2014?
2014.
Over this issue, and we came up with an agreement with them, and that seems to have worked, there's some ways that it hasn't worked and whatnot, and I don't know how we would get that in place with all of the other platforms, quote unquote. But it seems like the, I voted against doing the ZTA, I believe, at our, the last time we talked about this, and the reason for that was that I would like to just see our staff focus on getting the final product done, and I didn't really, wasn't entirely aware of, I don't really see all the benefits in the short term of doing the ZTA, but if that's where the council decides, you know, I would, I'll go along with that. I think that the council should focus on getting the language for proper LCPA done in a timely fashion, and moving forward with that. I don't know if we want to go through any of the other more minutia-based details surrounding either the ZTA portion or the LCPA portion, but I'm, no, I'd turn that over to the mayor and let her dictate how she wants to go about that.
Okay, thank you, Skylar. Yeah, thanks for everyone who has emailed us, met with us, Michael, shown up tonight. The first thing I'd like to address is a comment that staff has not followed the council motion that was passed. So, I'm going to read the motion that we passed first, and this is from the October 28th council meeting. Directed staff to one, initiate a zoning text amendment, ZTA, and local coastal program amendment, LCPA, regarding regulation of home sharing and short-term rentals, per direction provided by council, including adopting provisions similar to Santa Monica's home sharing ordinance for single-family homes, bypassing ZORACES, the zoning ordinance revisions and code enforcement subcommittee, and taking the ZTA and LCPA directly to the Planning Commission. And two, bring back an updated version of the September 26, 2018 draft ordinance to the city council for adoption, with the understanding it would be superseded when the new ZTA and LCPA were approved, with planning in parentheses. So, I just want to make sure everybody understands what we passed, okay? That's the exact wording of the motion. All right? Go ahead, Skylar.
Karen, I had one additional comment, it wasn't really talked about a lot, it has at some points in the past, but I feel that the, and I think that data in LA County and other places, Seattle, elsewhere, is really starting to show this, that with the proliferation of short-term rentals and the significant increases in the housing market and the rental market, that's probably one of the largest things that is adding to some of the, our challenges in this state in regards to housing, homelessness, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think that that's very important, that that's understood. I know that I see that amongst people that I know in this community here, where their places where they've lived for a long time get turned over into short-term rental, in some multifamily buildings. So, I just want to put that out there, that I know that we, there's all this talk about money, there's talk about quality of life, neighborhoods, everything, very much important. I think neighborhood probably being one of the most key things in there, and without housing, you can't have a neighborhood. And with, if you take your housing stock and you turn it all into short-term rentals, you're not going to have long-term people, and you're not going to have community. So, I think that that's the crux of this issue that our council is having to deal with, and I think that the council's making a very bold and strong statement in saying that we value having a neighborhood. So I appreciate that from everyone that's up here, and from hearing from all of you.
Okay, thank you. And for everyone, and it was a lot of people who mentioned enforcement, I could not agree more. This is absolutely the key, not just to this issue, but to many. So, if we need to take steps to boost enforcement, I'll be the first person to vote in favor of that. It doesn't do anybody any good for us to pass anything, any ordinance, without enforcement, and I know the staff already knows that, but I just want to say that. And Bonnie, I have a question again, I asked you this the last time we discussed this. I know you just talked about it a minute ago. Could you give a guesstimate about how long this would take to get through Coastal? And for us to adopt whatever it is we get back from Coastal and put it into effect?
I think we could get through our local adoption process by sometime spring of 2020, and then submit it to the Coastal Commission. I would truly be, you know, guessing blind about how quickly they could, they could or would get it agendized and through their process. I think a year is not unrealistic for some amendments, they routinely grant themselves time extensions, they're required to deal with a local government's proposed LCP amendment within a certain amount of time, but routinely they grant themselves extensions to address that. So, you know, if something is a real priority, they can certainly make it happen, they worked with us very closely on our Wulsey Fire Amendments, for example, and that got turned around in a crazy short amount of time. If they, if, and anything that we are closely collaborating with them on, you know, it eliminates the potential for suggested modifications, it can always go faster and more smoothly, it's less work for them on their end too, if, you know, we're all in agreement about the approach. I don't know how they would, we haven't discussed with them, a potential home sharing approach here in Malibu, so I'm not sure, you know, how that would come across as far as, you know, whether they would have a lot of suggested changes or not. But I would anticipate a year just based on their typical processes.
Okay, thank you. In this packet, that's part of the public record, there's a letter from the Coastal Commission dated December 6, 2016, in this packet, it's attachment seven, it says page 117 at the bottom, and I'm going to read from part of it, which is the second to the last paragraph. First, please note that vacation rental regulation in the coastal zone must, underlined by them, occur within the context of your local coastal program, LCP, and/or be authorized pursuant to a coastal development permit, CDP. The regulation of short-term slash vacation rentals represents a change in the intensity of use and of access to the shoreline, and thus constitutes development to which the Coastal Act and LCPs must apply. Well, that's pretty clear, to me at least. There's another letter from the Coastal Commission, that's also part of the public record in this packet, it's attachment three, and it's a letter from the Coastal Commission dated September 20, 2018, and it's addressed to Bonnie, our planning director. And I will read an excerpt from that, which is the third paragraph. Commission staff views the city's proposed amendment as a supportable effort to provide for some regulatory controls and management provisions for short-term rentals. However, we believe that vacation rental regulations in the coastal zone must occur within the context of the city's LCP. We encourage the city to submit an LCP amendment to the commission that includes policies and provisions that reflects the subject Malibu Municipal Code Amendment, MMC, regarding short-term rentals. Again, that's clear to me at least. So, back to enforcement. Hearing what we've heard more than once now about the length of time this is going to be at Coastal, I think it's a disservice to this community to remain as we are without any ordinance. And I think the interim ordinance that Jefferson and I discussed the last time this subject was before us, is something that would be a service to the community, and it would give people some safeguards, it would give people leverage for the bad actors, it would put in place mechanisms to shut people down who are causing problems. It would put in place mechanisms to shut people down who are causing problems. And I think that would be a major shift while we wait for the home-sharing ordinance or suggestion to come back from coastal. So that's what I have to say about that right now. Would anyone else like to speak?
I just want to chime in quickly on enforcement. I had a question last time as I sat in that horrible hotel in Baltimore when we had the last meeting. That was no fun, by the way. Did you know the video lag is about 30 seconds when you do that? So you literally can't watch it. My question was last time, can we include the cost of enforcement in a permit process for short-term rentals? And I think you were going to said you were going to get back to me on, an answer on that.
Um, I think it depends on what we're, are we talking about adding?
A couple of staff members, for example.
If we add extra staff? I mean, I think it depends on what they would exactly be doing. Are they going to be processing these things? Are we talking about sending out patrols, hiring additional code enforcement officers? It could depend on what it is.
Okay, well, I, I know that basically the fees for permits that we charge reflect actual cost.
Yep.
So if a permit requires enforcement, I assume that enforcement is part of the process? Yes or no? That's what I'm looking for.
Okay, I mean, I think perhaps some of like, if we have, we have post-compliance that's going to be, you know, monitoring these properties, which is part of enforcement, I think some of those costs could be rolled into here in terms of hiring separate officers to go around. I wouldn't think that would be something that would be recoverable. If there are other things we could enforce, I mean, we would, we would want to, you know, set these, you know, you know, the fees that we're going to have to recover with costs that we can. It's going to have to come through an analysis, you know, that's going to come through with the fee schedule when we go through with that. So I think the better focus is on what you want, what kind of enforcement tools you want to bring in, and then staff can come back with analysis about what we can recover and what we could charge as fees.
Uh, yes, I appreciate you reading the second part of the letters from the coastal commission. And that pretty much tells me like where I feel about it myself, and what you just, you know, have in that second letter that you mentioned there, the latest one, and the fact that if we put the ZTA in place now, and the ZTA is different from the Santa Monica ordinance, where we call it home sharing, and we have changes of definitions, that we may be hurting ourselves in the long run. And that's the difficult part as administrators we have to face. Whether we're willing to put our constituents through the long wait of the LCPA to have it done correctly in the long run, or do we adopt something, and this is the quick language of it, adopt something now that we crafted that has bullet points that may hurt us in the long run? Because there will be a taking challenge to this if we change too much. And that's what I've learned in the past and read that second part of the letter, telling us right there that their last statement to us is, we're, we're waiting. It's not like they're going to put this on a stall, because it's better for them to resolve it right away than stall it, because there'll be other communities looking at our language as well, the way we looked at Santa Monica's language. So for the Santa Monica effective ruling that we all wanted to adopt, we may be hurting ourselves in the long run to satisfy the needs right now. And that's kind of how I'm feeling about this, is the long run is what Mikey had talked about a few minutes ago. We're here for the long run. Of course, I won't be here, but Mikey and you will be, and you'll be faced with these challenges in a year or so. And I would rather have you on good footing and have our attorney, who's on good footing with Santa Monica, be facing the challenges of the coastal commission with a full quiver.
I have to say, I don't follow your logic when you say if we change too much, because obviously a much more drastic change would be from what we have right now, which is nothing at all, to the home-sharing ordinance. So, I, I'm sorry, I just don't follow that logic.
Well, changes our staff has to incorporate that. We have to find the, the value added, as was mentioned by, by other council members, of how we can attach a fee for bad apples and bad actors. All of these things will have to be dedicated at one time through Bonnie's and Riva's staff, whereas if we just go for the long, quick, best we can, throw it in front of coastal as soon as we can, that seems like the long-term, the better answer for this community. It just, we ought, as I spoke to Lynn Norton at the last meeting, I said, the challenges come about because you have these short-term platforms that are very crafty. They're more crafty at us because they can change overnight. We take administratively a year to change anything that has any definition or meaning. That's what we're faced with. We're administrators, and we can't change rules for benefit without everybody involved. Short-term platforms can do it overnight. The long-term role is the one that I would be wanting to pursue for the city, and that is straight to the LCPA and put all of Bonnie's and Riva's efforts into that LCPA.
Okay, does anyone else have anything?
Yeah, I think we're kind of dancing around the issue here, which is everyone wants to head toward the same goal. It's just a question of whether we want to embrace the ZTA in the interim, I think. And then we can address all the fine points. Enforcement, Graham, you talked about enforcement. Richard Lawrence, enforcement. Scott Dietrich, enforcement. Lloyd Ahern, enforcement. Enforcement, enforcement. So the, the ZTA provides a little more teeth for enforcement. So there we are. There's the, there's the dilemma at this point. Mayor, if you might entertain, indulge me for a second. Michael, you're a big anti-ZTA guy. Can you come and take to the mic and give us the downside to embracing the ZTA? Because you dug into this more deeply and on a basis than anyone.
Thank you. The issue with enforcement is that the entire industry was built on a willful denial of existing law. So when you pass the law, a large percentage of people are just going to say, come find me. And this is, a good example of it would be that in Los Angeles, they passed their ordinance. They gave them a 10-month grace period to come and put in an application and get a permit. After that 10 months, on implementation day, only 4,000 of 28,000 people signed up, got, went for a permit. So their starting compliance rate is somewhere between 14 and 17%. And that's what you're going to be faced with. So when, when we do the Santa Monica ordinance, we have the ability to force the platforms to take those listings down. And that's how you stop it. So the party houses and things like that, I, I don't believe that you're going to get compliance out of it. They're still going to challenge. So I'm, I'm pretty worried about it. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. So you're comfortable with the, based on all the research you've done and how much you've seen this in other towns with going, going ahead with the existing, the existing paradigm, for want of a better word, while we wait? Could be a year and a half, maybe two years? Who knows? I don't know.
Yeah, well, my opinion is that we should pass the law and let coastal challenge it. That's my opinion, but a good example you could look at right now is Boston, who, their implementation date started yesterday. And they have won the line, one sentence in settlement that says, platforms are required to take down any non-compliant listing or violating listing within seven days of written notice. So in their grace period, the article that I read said, only 1,500 out of 6,100 people applied for a permit, and half of those were rejected because people falsify the documents or the information on the permit. This is what you see in, in Santa Monica as well. The reason for the revision was that 30% of the people that they issued permits to are under investigation for falsifying their application. That's in the staff report that I sent. So in Boston, they issued 750 permits, and on implementation day, because they had won that sentence, Airbnb is required to and has agreed to remove those listings. So the non-compliant ones, the illegal ones, and that's pretty impressive on day one. So, you know, they're going to go from 6,100 to maybe 1,000 or 1,200, and that's a good reduction. That's what we're looking for. So, I mean, that's what I can tell you, is that you're going to be faced with people who want to challenge everything, and the platform accountability subheading is what makes the enforcement happen. You have to have a combination of the right definitions, conditions, restrictions, prohibitions, and that piece, and then you're doing good.
And you think we can do all that without getting an LCP amendment?
Uh, well, the way, I mean, I've talked to a lot of people about it. The way it was explained to me is that we could do it and wait for them to challenge us. So I'm, you know, I'm not an expert in coastal commission law, but that's, you know, what I was told. So I, I'm going to leave it up to you and make that decision.
Okay, thanks. Trevor, your comment?
Trevor, I would add, I actually got a call from Sharon over the weekend, and she was asking and questioning the reason as to why we even have to go to coastal over this. So if you could, I mean, I know that we have two letters from coastal saying, you know, if you want to regulate anything about this, you have to come to us, but coastal basically says, if you want to do anything anyways, you got to come to us. It's not in your LCP, or that's a change to that. So if you could shed some light on that.
Sure. The issue here being, we're changing the use. I mean, there's, there's no argument that, you know, right now, we allow short-term rentals, and we will be severely restricting that to home sharing at that point. It's, in the coastal act, you need to have an LCP amendment if there is a change of use. And so since we need to go through that, we need to have a LCP amendment. And, you know, we talked about the last time we were up here, in terms of what Santa Barbara did. Santa Barbara, you know, was similar to us. They were issuing business licenses to short-term rentals, and then they decided, well, actually, we've been doing this wrong, and our code actually says that, you know, this use is prohibited. And they started putting an enforcement program in immediately, no LCP amendment, and then they got sued and then they lost. So that, that case is, you know, being appealed, but, you know, that's what we're looking at. And, you know, since it's the change of use, there's, it's, it's black and white in the coastal act that you need to have an LCP amendment for it.
Well, I would make a motion at this time that we forego the ZTA and go for an LCPA and see where the, that lies, if we have consensus to move forward, and then we could go through the direction on that.
I would second that.
That would be staff's recommendations number three and number four, but not one and two. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I would add, so are we just, are we going to first decide if we're going forward to the ZTA and then come back and see if we want to tweak the amendment? Is that what we're looking at? Are we looking at trying to just be done?
We're looking at not doing the ZTA and just doing the LCPA.
All right, because I still have comments on the LCPA, so I, I, are we going to come back and discuss that?
I'm making a motion to forego the ZTA process, strictly go forward with an LCP amendment, and we would go over the details of that following, if we have consensus on that.
Okay, thanks.
Mikey, do you have anything to add to this motion?
No, he said we'll go over the, he said we'll go over the LCPA, so.
Are you actually making the motion here? Are you just getting consensus for a straw vote?
I'm asking for a consensus for a straw vote, see how we're going to, this conversation's going to go.
I'll support that. I thought it was a motion, so I seconded it.
So that would, that would imply then that there would be a, I don't know how you guys stand on it.
Well, why don't we do a vote and see if we're going forward with the LC, I mean, the ZTA?
Just a straw vote, this would be a straw vote for LCP amendment, no, no ZTA. So items three and four, recommendations three and four would be approved, recommendations one and two would not be adopted. And it's just a straw vote.
Correct, correct. Mayor, do you want to roll call for this?
Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullen?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Pearson? Mayor Fair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So then the, the question is if you want to add any additional direction to the LCP amendment that's going back to the planning commission?
I, I think it's important now for each of us to look at what's sort of the key topics of the LCP amendment, and then see if there's anything else that we want to add in there or remove.
Do you have anything, Skylar?
Maybe if you want to go raise items and see if there's consensus on each item you want to raise.
I would support that because I wrote down a number of them, and I don't want to be too long about it, so.
Go ahead.
Most of it, what I wrote down about came about with defining, because with clear definition, if the council agrees, clear definition gives us a stronger bearing on enforcement. So I, I thought that we should define some of these things first, allowing the city attorney's office, the city manager's office, to be allowed to have an interpretation so that we can get enforcement officers a platform which to stand on with some firm, solid meaning. So I thought definitions might be something we should discuss, but that's up to the council. Just my, my opinion.
Is, is there anything in particular that you had, that you wanted to discuss in regards to definitions? I think that there's a lot of.
Yeah, you, you don't need to get down to brass tacks and rewrite the ordinance here. You're just giving direction. This will then go, staff will take your, you know, the direction that you've given, bring that together, bring it to the planning commission, then they'll provide their recommendation on the language. It'll come back here for you to make your final decision. So if you want to say, add a stronger definitions section or a stronger definition of this, then staff can bring up with options to bring to you.
Sure, it was pretty simple stuff, like the definition of what's a bedroom. So if you looked on these platform behaviors, they now have cooking classes in residences. And you can take that cooking class for four to six hours. I call it the Sunday afternoon football rental. I know they may not have heard that out in the audience, but I'm predicting that you're going to have STRs.
By the hour.
Okay, by the hour. I just said football game, which is four to six hours. But you're still impacting your neighborhood for that four to six hours, and maybe they stay overnight, maybe they don't. Maybe the ones that didn't have a good game stay overnight because they had too much. But with definitions of the booking transactions, what the dwelling unit is in a bedroom, just a couple of simple ones, we can give Riva and staff and as well as the future enforcement, the ability to stand and say, this is what we ruled on, so.
So minimum of one night?
Well, I, I don't know. That's, I'm asking you guys, because you're.
I mean, instead of by the hour.
Yeah, you can't rent by the hour. As one speaker said, this isn't a brothel.
Yeah, we all know we've had reports of brothels in the city. But if, if we can, if you want to be more clear about the definitions of, you said booking transaction, bedroom, and there was a third you said?
It was the definition of the dwelling unit.
Dwelling unit.
Yeah, because as we found out, I mentioned to somebody earlier this evening, that the motor homeless homes are now on Airbnb for 800 a weekend for a nice motorhome at Corral Beach. So this creative way of doing business is what's frustrating, I think, many of the people in the room.
So you're looking for staff to adopt strict definitions of, of items such as booking transactions, bedroom, dwelling unit, to enforce that, to do, to, to eliminate any space for other creative types of rentals?
No, but I think what is, that implies into is, when you're looking at the number of guests, like, and you're defining how many bedrooms there, he's, I think Jefferson's trying to be like, okay, what, you know, define exactly what a bedroom is, you know, as it's saying, okay, you're, have a house and, you know, you have a five-bedroom permitted house that we show in our city records, but you're coming forth and asking for a, a vacation rental permit for an eight-bedroom house. That doesn't add up.
So you're looking for more robust.
Is that correct, Jeff?
Yes, just, just because when we try and enforce it, if you say, hey, in my oppo- Just, just because when we try and enforce it, if you say, "Hey, in my application, I have indicated five bedrooms, and you see the house is 4,500 square feet," you know what you're going to get in the way of TOT. You know what you're going to get in the way of participation. You'll know how many parking spaces you need, and you'll know how many people are going to be there. So, if you have a 4,500 square foot house with five bedrooms, you have 10 people there, that's business. I get it. That's what, that's what we should be able to enforce, not the guy that's using the garage as a rental, or, "By the way, I have a cabana, and I can get four more people in the cabana." So, not without getting into too much detail and keeping people awake.
I think you're looking at more robust definitions of exactly what can be rented. That's what you're looking at.
I think in the long run, since we just had a straw vote about, we're looking at this for the long run, for the benefit of the community, when Karen and Mikey are trying to go through this, and the three of us are gone, making it easier for them to work with staff to get this done. And we're going to have to have these definitions. Without the definitions, you can't do enforcement.
Can I make a suggestion? You know, Michael actually submitted a staff report from Santa Monica as part of the record, and in it, they reviewed kind of updating holes they had had in their previous versions of that. I would say it would be smart for us to review that and to incorporate it and learn from their lessons and, you know, completely review that and make sure that we close all the loopholes that have been problems for them. That's what I would say.
So, it would be to review the Santa Monica staff report and incorporate...
Lessons learned, you know, and...
They could apply to our ordinance.
Yeah, that we'd refine it so that we don't have to step in those potholes that they've already done.
Okay.
And I think that kind of covers a lot of, a lot of individual specific things, and that's probably a good way for us to go. I mean, plagiarism is, is good in this regard, and we can benefit from their lessons.
Plagiarism, as you mentioned, Rick, is also something that the Coastal Commission will be looking at and the success rate that they had in Santa Monica. And I believe that that will be part of the play in the next year or two.
Yeah, I think it's just smart. You know, we want to walk in their footsteps and have our, our version be as close to theirs as, as it can be without straying too far off the reservation.
I think it's an excellent idea, Rick. I was trying to figure out how we're, I was looking and going, "Okay, we have four hours and 21 minutes till midnight. How are we going to get through this?" So, I think that's an excellent idea to really speed it along. I totally agree with you.
And in the meantime, we're still a chance to review it when it comes back.
Absolutely. This is, this is, you know, we're giving direction to, to, because we have, you know, the bones of an ordinance here and the direction from that. So, if there's any supplemental stuff, it's going to be brought to the planning commission, vetted through them, and then brought back here.
Additionally, if I may add, and I would like to find an avenue for the city manager or the staff to, to put this out to the population, to the public, so that they can get an idea of what we're attempting to do. Because we may understand the details of it, because that's our job, but a lot of people are sitting out there, and they're all, we have a full house or half-full house this late in the evening. It's because people are interested. And I'd like to let them know about the Santa Monica ordinance and where we're headed. And I think we could fabricate that through Bonnie or Riva and let them know.
We, we do have a webpage that's dedicated to this, this project of creating a short-term rental ordinance for the city, so we can add all the background materials that we want to refer to as part of that website.
Thank you, Bonnie. I'm sure you'll do a good job of it, and I do appreciate it. Because now that you have consensus with the council of which way we want to go, I think the public, you know, the newspapers are here, and it would really clear, clear things up and show transparency. I think we really need to be about that right now. Thank you.
Yeah, the, the website is malibu city.org/STR. It's, it's, it already exists, and we'll just add materials to it as we work through this process.
I support that. One, one comment. In addition to the, the Santa Monica staff report, I mentioned, Michael also submitted an email with some suggestions for definitions, et cetera, as part of his email. And if you could review those and, you know, for possible inclusion, that's probably a good idea also.
Include a analysis and consider that for, to be included with the ordinance.
Correct.
Okay. Skylar, is your motion?
Maybe that's as much detail as we need to get into tonight.
I think we have a pretty good...
Do you have a good parameter of everything, Trevor?
I think so. I think we had a pretty good direction last time, this is add some additional items to consider. And we have, you know, at least two more hearings coming forward about this, so people have more time to weigh in. And if new developments or new ideas come forward, we can always make more changes.
Okay. And I would just note on the bottom of what Michael submitted, and something that was outlined, was the benefit that they had on the East Coast in regards to a platform being required to take down a non-permitted or non-compliant listing within a certain amount of days. I think that's probably pretty vital.
Yeah, we've looked into some platform liability stuff. That'll come back. There are limits on that because there's, you know, the Communications Decency Act and the Store Communications Act also put limits on what we can do to them and require them to do. But we're going to explore options and what we think the reach is of what we can do there.
Okay.
Okay. So, do we have a motion?
My motion is to go forward with the initiating the LCPA process for short-term rental ordinance.
Yes, I think it's staff's recommendations, number three and number four. And you provide additional direction about more best definition section, and to review the Santa Monica staff report that was submitted, as well as Michael Lustig's emails, the suggestions in Michael Lustig's email to analyze these and incorporate items that could aid the ordinance or analyze, you know, the, analyze those aspects of those proposals, and also do look into platform liability and limitation issues.
Okay.
Do you want to say something, Michael? Quickly.
Trevor, in, in the Ninth Circuit opinion on the Santa Monica ordinance, the really cool things that happened there is that the, the opinion says, "This ordinance does not give safe harbor under the CTA 230, CDA 230, nor does it impinge First or Fourth Amendment rights." That's right there in that document. It's beautifully written. It really is. It's a nice opinion.
Yeah, I've seen it.
But you just told us to be worried about the CDA. So, if we copy Santa Monica, we probably don't have to worry about it, right?
Well, we were talking about the Boston ordinance, was it just different from Santa Monica?
No, I'm talking about the Santa Monica ordinance, because we're not copying Boston.
I referenced Boston. Maybe I misspoke.
That's what I was...
That's what we was responding to.
Right. Okay. Well, so there is a settlement, which I'll email to you.
Yeah.
Do you have that one? Read it?
Which one?
The Boston settlement from when, Boston prevailed over HomeAway and Airbnb. And their first day implementation, the first day of enforcement is amazing. So, we should look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to, we can take that on the record, but we're going to focus on the California laws. And I think that you have enough direction, you feel good with that.
I think so.
Okay. So, that's my motion.
Okay. So, Skylar has a motion. Rick, did you second?
I did second that, yeah.
Okay. Could we do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Pearson?
Yeah, yes.
Mayor Farr?
Yes.
Yeah. Motion carries.
Okay. Could someone make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor? Thank you.
Aye.
Good job.